I was, as Don.
You saw me before, we didn't meet yet?
No, Sam.
That's the dog.
Yes.
Get better.
Okay.
Okay. As we say.
All right, so I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Need to move her to secondary, please. Councillor Manson, councillor Morton, seconded. Now therefore be resolved that this October the fourteenth, regular meeting council be called to order at 6:01 PM. And everyone is here and we do have quorum. So the approval of the agenda, move her to secondary, please. Councillor Morton, councillor Manson. Resolution 2025-287 therefore be resolved that council for the corporation of Calv... Sorry, the Corporation Municipality of Calvin hereby approves the agenda as circulated. Any questions on the agenda? None, all in favor? It's carried.
We need to move her into secondary on that one?
Yeah, yeah, councillor Morton, councillor Manson. Declaration of pecuniary interest, we have none? Any going once, going twice, okay? So we have no declarations of pecuniary interest. Approval of the previous minutes, I'll move her to secondary, please. Councillor Morton, councillor Latimer. Now therefore be it resolved that the minutes for the regular council meeting of September the twenty-third be approved as presented. Are there any questions or amendments? None, all in favor? That is carried. We have no delegations to council tonight. Business arising from previous council meeting is none. Consent agenda, were there any items that anyone wanted to bring forward? Going once, going twice, no? So just a motion to accept, I need to move her to secondary, councillor Grant. And councillor Morton now therefore be resolved that council for the Corporation Municipality of Calvin hereby receive the consent agenda items as presented. All in favor? And that is carried. So we are, we rushed right into the BDO presentation. So next item on the agenda is the video presentation of the budget. So Donna, do you want to start off or do you want to hear?
Welcome to Dean DeCare and to Sheila Graham for assisting. Sheila was a great help throughout this whole process this summer since we were working on this since May, April, early May, so thank you very much and welcome to council meeting. And let Dean take it from here.
Which one do I put up?
The financials. Not the colorful one. The other one. And that's the one.
Oh, not that one.
Ah, that's right.
Yeah. Everyone does have a copy in front of them.
Yeah, you can just minimize that one because we'll bring it up in a second. So while we're bringing it up, your worship, members of council, thank you very much for having Sheila and I here tonight. We're going to talk about the external audit for the Corporation Municipality of Calvin's financial statements for the year end December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. As Donna said, we have been working with her and her team over the last, better part of the last five months. A little difficult in the summer because of, you know, vacation and study leaves and things like that. So that kind of pushed it a little bit. The goal always is to get these financial statements done by April thirtieth, okay? So we can get our FIR files and get in front of you while the information is fresh. Now, as you'll see in a few minutes, as we go through, there was a number of different things that happened in two thousand and twenty-four that impacted your financial statements and that the accounting needed to be chewed up for those items. So. As in prior years, scroll down now.
On time.
Okay.
Seven and a half.
As in prior years, there is a table of contents or an index to the financial statements under the section of the municipal act in Ontario. You're required to appoint a municipal auditor. That auditor must be licensed in the province of Ontario to conduct external audits. That's in our case, that's BDO Canada. The financial statement start off with a two-page, two-and-a-half-page independent auditors' report that is issued to not just the members of council, but it also is issued to all inhabitants ratepayers of the Corporation Municipality of Calvin. And the whole idea under this particular legislation, everyone, is that someone does have access to the municipal books and records for the fiscal year December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, which include everything from source documents to contracts to invoices to bank statements to deposits, support for deposits, et cetera, and all reports from experts that are engaged by Calvin to assist them with setting up certain accounting numbers in the financials. And I'll talk about that as I walk you through. So the first thing I'm going to talk about is the audit report. The audit report. Is the, yep, you're following, you're perfect, perfect, perfect. So the audit report is, you'd like the audit report to be about two pages long. In your case, it's two and a half pages long. There's a couple of different things in it. One, there is a qualification, continues to be a qualification for not adopting government accounting standard. What is it, thirty-two eighty, called asset retirement obligations? That will be done in two thousand and twenty-five, come Hager High Water. And that's the standard that says we have to take stock of all of our buildings in particular and look for those that may have asbestos in them. And we have to set up an obligation or a liability for the remediation of that asbestos in those particular buildings. Or make the conclusion we have, do not have that issue. So we don't have any sites or infrastructure that we own as a municipality that has that issue. So, but the one thing that you do have is you have a landfill, a decent-sized landfill, which falls under that accounting standard. So that needs to be done, and ideally that needs to be done over the next, over the next couple of months. So as we head into the month of December, which is your year end. Over and above that, the audit report talks about, and it's very similar wording to prior years, the roles and responsibilities of management. So that is your CEO and staff. The rules and responsibilities of those charged with governance, that is mayor and council. And the rules and responsibilities of the municipal auditor as appointed under the provincial municipal act. Okay, section whatever, two ninety-six or whatever it is. And it goes through and talks about the responsibilities of each of those groups. Management's responsible for maintaining the general ledger accounts. Those charged with governance are responsible for the oversight of the audit, making sure the audit gets done, signing off the financials at the end of the year, et cetera. And the independent audit firm is responsible to look at the municipal books of account and look for risk of material misstatement, make adjustments or request adjustments be made when they are material or they are beyond what we call trivial. In your case, and I'll define that in a few minutes. And then report back some recommendations to management and then report back to you. And that's what we're doing here tonight. So if we're to the first page. So you're going to see about four or five big items in these financial statements. A lot, Calvin invested a lot of money, you should be really proud of this as mayor and council. You invested a lot of money on infrastructure in two thousand and twenty-four. Both roads maintenance as well as some road betterments that took place in two thousand and twenty-four. In addition to that, there were some larger tangible capital assets, I believe, that were acquired in two thousand and twenty-four as well. That, for the most part, everyone, you did not have to go and finance, okay? You actually did, were in receipt of senior levels of government funding, for example, for the province of Ontario funding for much of those expenditures. Now, look at this one page here, and I encourage you to read across two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-three. Your bank account went from one point, close to one point two million down to eight hundred thousand in two thousand and twenty-four. And I'll speak to some of the reasons for that in a second. Your investments went up a little bit, but they went up by seven thousand dollars from a hundred and thirty thousand to a hundred and thirty-six thousand roughly. Accounts receivable, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Accounts receivable, everyone, is HST rebates that you get back and any other user fees or items of that nature that may be anything, anything other than property taxes, okay? That are, they are recognized by you at December thirty-first as owing to you, and they are received after December thirty-first. So they can get typically in January or February. Then you have taxes receivable. So of your total tax roll of roughly one point seven million, which is what you are charging ratepayers, okay, in Calvin per year, of that one point seven million, two hundred and fourteen thousand was still outstanding at the end of two thousand and twenty-four. Now that includes both the municipal and the education portion, okay? So, and the one point seven, of course, is not, that's just your portion. And you'll see that revenue in a minute. So one point two million down from one point seven million the year before. But one of the things that you did, like I said, is you spent quite a bit of money on tangible capital assets in two thousand and twenty-four. And again, I'll get to that, I'll show you that in a second. Liability is two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars at the end of the year. Now, you did a really good job paying off all your trade payables, okay? And again, remember this is December, everyone, okay, of two thousand and twenty-four. So I know you have to think way back, you've had lots happen in Calvin since then, as we can all appreciate, as I can appreciate, including the storm that happened in the late spring. So accounts payable, two hundred and sixty-seven, a little bit higher than the year before, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. That two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, though, does include an accrual for legal settlements. Okay, a large accrual for legal settlements. The majority of the sixty-seven thousand is your trade payables. So, and again, that was really, really well done because, you know, for all intents and purposes, Calvin is run with a two hundred thousand dollar a month budget. That's how much you bring in and that's how much you spend every month, is roughly two hundred thousand dollars. Deferred revenue, twenty thousand dollars didn't change year over year, but the obligatory reserves did, five hundred and ninety and two hundred and ninety-four. What is that? That is OSIF money, NORDS money. It's money you bring in, in particular, the federal, the federal slash provincial, but federal gas tax money, which is now called Canada Community Bills, I believe, CBS funding. So it's government funding that you get, and it sits on here, on this page, everyone, until you spend it. When you spend it on roads, transportation in particular, but, you know, roads, it could be road construction, could be road betterments, could be road maintenance. As an example, when you spend it, that it goes from deferred or obligatory reserves into revenue or government transfers. And I'll show you that on the next page. And you did a good job spending that money this year, but you still had about two hundred and ninety-four thousand to spend at December thirty-first, which likely will be spent in two thousand and twenty-five. Long-term debt, well, what the heck happened, Dean? You said we don't have any debts. And I came to you guys a couple of years ago and said, you know, you're a municipality, you're a township that has no debt. You have no borrowings, but you did have a number of needs in terms of infrastructure, investment. So you said, okay, we're open to that. Well, then, over the past couple of years, you didn't, you know, you borrowed a little bit for some equipment and things of that nature. And this year, it's a large, there was a business equipment cap, two hundred and some thousand dollars. And I'll show you that in the note to the financials for, I think, half of a grader. But the other thing that's in there is, of course, Castle Home or East Nipissing District Home for the Age, whatever the legal name of that is. So you have a very large obligation to Castle Home over a thirty-year period for the redevelopment costs of that particular municipal or district home for the age that is sitting in that one point eight million. I talked to you guys about, I'm pretty sure I came to you last year and talked to you about it and said, listen, it, we still have, it's a moving target. Now, unfortunately, on expense, I don't, it's going to say it's a moving target, yeah, getting more expensive. Interest rates were higher, some of the costs are up, a little bit of, it's like all the delays, things like that. But there's back and forth. You're having good communications with Billy and the team that's at Castle Home in terms of getting that information as a municipality. You're still part of the group that's responsible for those capital costs. What the unknown continues to be the share of the province of Ontario, okay? Which could reduce your share, but the province sticks to what it originally said three years ago or five years ago. You know, and with some announcements since then, minor announcements since then, then that your share on a present value basis, it's booked in that one point eight million. It's part of that one point eight million as it's built in note seven. So that was the biggest reason for the increase, okay, year over year. The landfill, you know, kind of settled in around six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You do have a little bit of money in reserves to cover off that liability. You know, again, we're still over twenty years, twenty-some years out. By the time you actually have to write a cheque to close it, okay? And then after that, you have to care for it for another three years or whatever the case may be in Ontario. So we're still years out. You don't have to have that money on hand now, but, you know, you do have, the township does need to know or the municipality of Calvin needs to know that as we go through the next twenty-four years, we have to build enough money in our bank account to cover off the cost of closing and then maintaining or post-closure, post-closure costs that they're called over the life of that landfill. And then, of course, you have to plan for, you know, what, how we would replace in that landfill. And I can't remember if Calvin was, were they one of the ones that were talking about a joint?
No.
No, that was okay. But someone else apparently was talking about a joint. And I'm not talking about the joint one that Ottawa has right now. So that leaves you with net financial liabilities of one point eight million, an increase of a million dollars. The half of that increase was you, was new borrowings, living the grader. The other half of that increase, everyone, was the increase in the castle home redevelopment costs. Went up by five hundred thousand this year, okay, in two thousand and twenty-four.
So Dean, can I be explained if it weren't for those? And then the accrual for the legal settlement that we would have, we would have netted out, would have been on budget, right?
We would have, our net financial, well, I'm going to show you that on the next page, Donna. On this page here, your net financial liabilities would not, would have stayed at negative eight hundred thousand. Yes, they would not have gone up by a million. Tangible capital assets did go up. Usually, as a councillor, you're expecting that number to go down because every year you depreciate your infrastructure. So you record what's called amortization or depreciation in the old days. And for you guys, you know, depreciation is somewhere around two hundred thousand dollars, close to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. You don't budget for it in your municipal budget, not to say you shouldn't, but you don't. And so usually that will go down by that amount. Well, yours went up, and why did it go up this year? Because of, you'll see in note four, the betterments, we get to some roads that are going to, that we're going to amortize over a few years. And of course, some of the equipment that was purchased, including the grader and, it was a fire truck or some fire equipment, pardon me, et cetera. Inventory was, and pre-pays were minimal. Now, Donna's speaking to the next page. So you guys set a budget, and you set a budget of, from an accounting standpoint, of bringing in revenues of two point three million and incurring expenses, operating expenses of two point one million. That doesn't include creators, fire equipment and road improvements. That's just the cost of running the municipality, okay? That's, you know, staff salaries and supplies and insurance and interest on debt and things of that nature, like the normal, what I call period expenses, which would have left you with a surplus of a hundred and eighty thousand. It does also not include everyone depreciation. You don't budget for that, okay? And depreciation in your case is around two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So if you factor in depreciation, really, you should have landed at zero. You actually landed at a positive two hundred and six thousand dollars, okay? So that's the middle column that I'm pointing at, two hundred and six thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. That was the difference between your revenues and expenses in a positive manner, which is good. But remember, everyone, one of the reasons that it was positive two hundred and six thousand dollars is because you received a whole bunch of government money to spend on capital, on infrastructure, roads, grader, you know, equipment, et cetera. If not for that, if not for receipt of those monies, then that two hundred and six thousand dollars, like Donna said, would have been, you know, much closer to break even. Okay? Now, you have to take, unfortunately, you have to take off the castle redevelopment. Why are we showing a different line as opposed to showing it up in, it would go in, I think, social and family services, if I'm not mistaken, is where it would go in the line item above. You know, I'm kind of stretching the accounting framework a little bit by showing it separately, but I'm showing it separately for a reason. Because if I put that half million dollars up in social and family services, it would, it would balloon to eight hundred thousand dollars. Someone's going to say, what is going on in Calvin? It's, it is not. That castle redevelopment commitment, that is the increase in the expense for that facility that's being built in North Bay on Olive Street. Your share, okay? And again, on a present value basis, because it'll get expensed, it'll get charged off right now anyway, unless something changes. You'll have to pay for that over a thirty-year period. So your true deficit in two thousand and twenty-three was two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Your true deficit for two thousand and twenty-four was three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And you actually had a budget, everyone, for a hundred and eighty thousand dollar surplus minus depreciation of two hundred and eighteen thousand. So you actually, guys, had a budget for like negative, what, negative forty thousand? You came in at negative three hundred thousand? Well, the biggest chunk of that is Castle Home, half a million dollars. Okay? So again, very, very easily explainable. What happens, Dean, if the province changes their mind, if costs go down, if the interest rates go down, assumptions go down for Castle Home next year? Well, then this number becomes, it goes the other way, okay? The liability goes down and you get a credit on your income statement. But for now, we certainly are going with the numbers that we know. If you look at the next page. I usually don't go through this, but this is an important one. This is one that, this is going to change over the next couple of years under the new financial reporting model. But for governments, okay, Ontario, Canada, you know, municipalities, Toronto, North Bay, Calvin, et cetera. But what it does show you is your net financial liabilities. And this is the one that, you know, Donna says, okay, I want to, you know, I want to try and be in that, what you'd love that number to be is that it's negative, whatever the debt is for Castle Home. And then you can say, okay, every year I got to come up with my, whatever it is, three hundred grand that I got to transfer to Castle Home for the capital. And I have to do that through user fees, I have to do it through property taxation, I've got to do it through whatever the case may be. I have to somehow figure out how to raise, raise that money. Right now, it's sitting, actually, you're very close. So at the end of two thousand and twenty-three, you were negative eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Castle Home was a million of that. This year, you're negative one point eight million, Castle Home is one point six million of that, okay? Now, you also, if you remember, guys, that you did go borrow some money for a COVID degree here, but it was like a dump truck, large. Okay, I don't know if anyone sees it outside or not, but I took a really long route to Calvin tonight. I saw most of your municipality. I have no idea where I was, but I'm way out there.
Way to cover for me.
I actually saw Adams meet and I got to see a whole bunch of roads.
Land building.
Yeah, okay. Well, I inspected. So if you said, okay, you know, like right now, we know that the province of Ontario is in a net debt position of, I think it's around five hundred billion dollars or whatever. The government of Canada, one point two trillion, right? Calvin, one point eight million. Why? And it really solely is Castle Home. If the province, you know, decides to hundred percent fund Castle Home, you go down and you're like negative a hundred grand or something. Okay? Not too bad because you, the money that you put into vehicles and fire equipment and roads, bettering some roads in two thousand and twenty-four. On the cash flow statement, this is the interesting one. So you might be a councillor that's sitting there going, okay, explain to me again, Dean. From an operating standpoint, we actually had positive cash flow, like we had about four hundred thousand dollars in positive cash flow. And what, how do you, how do you, what, how do you reconcile that, Dean? Well, you had a loss of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Well, two hundred and eighteen is depreciation, that's not cash, so add that back. Five hundred and thirty-four is the provision for Castle Home, that's not cash, not today, so add that back. So you actually were positive four hundred thousand dollars, okay, in operating cash flow in two thousand and twenty-four. Perfect. Then you said, well, some of that came from, a big chunk of that came from cash that I received in a prior year. What was it, gas packs from prior years, as a good example, okay? Which were around two hundred and ninety-six thousand. So then that, this says to me, how much did I generate day to day, okay, in Calvin, positive cash flow? And the answer is three hundred and eight thousand. This is the one, if you remember, your worship and Donna, when I was on the phone with the bank, remember?
Right.
So explaining to them, this is how much we generate. In Calvin, we generate about three hundred thousand dollars a year, positive cash flow. But everyone, you need that to buy assets. Oh, I need a new fire truck, oh, I need a new, we need to better this, we need to replace this bridge and better it. We need to replace the roof on the, on the municipal office. If we, if we need to buy capital, that has to come from that three hundred thousand. Or we apply to the province for a grant, okay? Or we borrow. Very simple. So it comes from this cash flow, or we borrow it, or we apply for particular grants. And that's the number down below, you see acquisition of tangible capital assets, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. So that's a big year in two thousand and twenty-four. But four hundred and twenty-eight thousand was the vehicles, right? Eighteen thousand dollars with some other equipment, machinery and equipment, some fire stuff. And four hundred and fifty thousand bucks roads and bridges, Donna, can speak to that? And we use the OSIF money, I think.
Right, the OSIF and NORDS.
And NORDS. But what road was it? Or roads?
Peddlers.
That was peddlers, right? Which I, and I spent a lot of time on peddlers tonight. So I will say it actually was, it was much better than Adams. See, I can say these names in notes. Okay? Now, on the cash flow statement, note eight, again, if you get it regarding the questions, but you're not going to. But as a mayor and councillor, you can say, this is how much we invested in two thousand and twenty-four in our municipality. That's a, that's a fair chunk of money. We did that using, you'll hear other mayors talk about this, your worship, pay as you go. Pay as you go, you used three hundred thousand of your own internal operating cash flow. We also borrowed half of the dump truck, okay? You know, in hindsight, we probably, if we knew we had this, you know, that we had this god catastrophe storm. But we borrowed about two hundred and twenty-one thousand. And then we repaid back a couple of those, I don't know, it's not a seed loan, but an old ten thousand dollar loan.
Uh-huh. Yeah, I mean, that was the dump truck, the.
The old one.
The old fire.
Yeah, the old, yeah. Okay? So that's why your cash went down by three hundred and ninety-two thousand. So again, as a councillor, you're saying, okay, now I understand why it's down. We didn't borrow, you know, we spent nine hundred thousand on assets, okay? We didn't borrow nine hundred thousand. If you did, you'd have a whole bunch of money in your bank account. You only borrowed two hundred thousand, okay? Now, could you have borrowed nine hundred thousand? Again, it, we have rules in Ontario, we have laws in Ontario, and it's called the maximum amount that you can borrow. And I thought, Donna, oh yeah, this was something again that we had to deal with the bank, if you remember that. Annual repayment limit or your ARL, it will drive how much you can actually borrow. There's two rules for you guys. One, you can only borrow money to buy assets, okay? Can't borrow money to pay payroll or anything like that. And secondly, you can borrow money that results in a principal interest payment in the aggregate of all your other loans that you may have, including cash loan, sorry, that adds up to blah, X dollars, which is roughly twenty-five percent of your property tax revenue, okay? But Donna has the exact number that the province of Ontario confirms to you every year as called an annual repayment limit. And you're well within that annual repayment limit at the end of the center. Then the notes to your financial statements, if you go down. So the next four pages, five pages, everyone, are the exact same as in prior years. So nothing in public sector accounting standards, nothing changed, nothing. If you're the government of Canada, if you're the city of Toronto, you're the municipality of Calvin. Nothing changed in terms of the application of accounting principles by that body, that accounting body in Toronto. Then we get into the notes. So note one is financial instruments, you know, what types of risks did we have? The biggest thing there for financial instruments, everyone, is where I would focus if I was a councillor, which is a dream of mine at some point in time, but not in Calvin, though, your worship, I promise. But certainly the biggest thing is for you guys to look at, okay, what about aging? So if people that owe us money, in particular, is asking our CEO and saying, okay, how are our property taxes doing? Do we have any taxpayers that owe us money that's over two years old, as an example, okay? So that's, because that's managing cash flow. And so there is some disclosure in note one around that. And there's a separate note as well, I believe, on taxes, Sheila, that shows the taxes in years. And it actually was down significantly in two thousand and twenty-four. So I was really happy about that. So up here, two hundred and fourteen thousand in taxes, both municipal and education. Hundred and eighty-one was two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-one thousand was two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-two and back. And that's all in note five. But I don't want to, right now, we're still on note two. Yeah, keep going, one more page. No, you're doing great, that's all those, that's all the same wording as prior years. Those are all the accounting policies adopted by Calvin. Yeah, we talked about that note.
A note, are you on happy?
Note two. Next page. Oh, next page.
You have to say next page.
My God, a councillor, yeah. Oh, one more, next page. The financial instrument adoption was, that was a pain in the butt. Okay, there we go. So earlier I said you have about a hundred and thirty-six thousand bucks. Just be comfortable that it gets invested in GICs, and that's fine. You don't, you still need to be in stocks or mutual funds or, or anything of that nature. And, you know, far be it for me, Mr. Manson, to talk about how to invest, but I will say that GICs are fine for municipalities, okay? It was, it was a bit problematic with interest rates were like point eight percent, right? But. It was it was a bit problematic with the interest rates were like point eight percent, right? But. Note three, accounts receivable, you'll see that the biggest chunk of it is H S T. There's, you know, a little bit of user fees that were owed at the end of the year. Note four is the one, if you said, Dean, you know, when you said we invested eight hundred ninety-six thousand, where do I get that from? If a taxpayer asks me a question, well, it's on page nineteen. And it shows you that, you know, how much did we, how much did we spend on new land and land improvements? Nothing. How much we spent on new buildings or building improvements? Nothing. How much we spent on machinery and equipment? Well, about nineteen thousand bucks. New vehicles, four hundred thirty thousand dollars. And you retired an old vehicle. And then roads and bridges, you'll see four hundred forty-eight thousand, which was a very large improvement that you made. And I think that Donna already referred to the, was it the Peddlers Drive as one of the recipients of that, those improvements. Which should extend the life of that road. Thus, the reason for me driving on it. Note five, I I will draw your attention to note five. And, you know, right now, this is the one that I talked about, you know, in terms of your taxes. Good job. Like, you know, otherwise I would come on and say, listen, your taxes are getting a little bit old. You know, it's one thing to say, well, you know, as municipality, we can actually go and we can repossess or we can take property tax sale or whatever, whatever. Well, that's fine. But you don't wanna do that, right? Like, that's your absolute last resort. It's looking for different ways to collect taxes that are owed to you. And there wasn't too many old ones at the end of December two thousand twenty-four. Perfect. This also shows your valuation allowance, two thousand dollars, so we can actually get rid of that. Or there could be a year, what that means is, do we have any? If we had a situation, and you could have this in your in in Calvin, where you had a commercial taxpayer as an example, that you knew was financially having hardship, you know, and they owed, they owed you, you know, a year or even two years worth of property taxes. You could set up an allowance because you may not collect it. And in that case, you know, tax sale doesn't do you any good in some of those cases, when it's commercial, when it's businesses that owe you property taxes. So, I mean, you you know, you still have to write your rights under the law. But if if there was any uncollectible, that's where you put it, okay, in that two thousand dollars. Or you just get rid of that and say, you know what, all our taxes are collectible. Note six, I think I talked about already. You can see the accounts payable as well as, you know, accrued accrued liabilities, that's for settlements, as well as accrued payable, which is for your staff. Note seven, Sheila talked about the fact that you had, you know, paid down that thirty thousand dollar OSIF loan that you were paying down at ten thousand a year, which is perfect. The new dump truck loan, which is due in two thousand twenty-nine, and then, of course, you have the Castle Home redevelopment. Note eight gives you all kinds of information again on your landfill. So, you know, for this council, you could say, well, you know, Dean, we're talking about, oh, expected to reach capacity in twenty-five years. And the estimated current capacity is twenty-nine thousand cubic meters. And I think we had used, somewhere in here talks about the cubic meters we had utilized so far. So, you know, we get an engineer to help us, you know, how much have we actually utilized? There are things that you could do, though, eh? Like, you should talk to. Ninety, so, you know, how do, can we do things like leaching or self self containment or whatever, whatever, during the lifetime of that landfill? There might be some easy things you could do during the next twenty-five years that will shrink the cost once it's closed. So again, that's something that you can, you know, kind of talk to your engineering consultants about. Note nine, as a mayor and councillor, you wanna know, what do we have in the kitty for next year, Dean, to spend? Well, you have some gas tax, a hundred forty-nine thousand, called the Canada Community Building Fund. You'll see that on note nine. There it is, yeah. So the, where it says comprised as follows. So I'm not gonna talk about the Planning Act money. You guys know way more about that than I do. But certainly the gas tax to be spent on transportation, and you've got almost a hundred thousand bucks left in OSIF money. Okay, but again, great job this year utilizing funds, you know, NORDs, gas packs, OSIF, etc. And again, you invested that in your community.
Just the note in two thousand twenty-five, most of this was spent.
Yeah, this is twenty-five before.
Twenty twenty-four.
Yep, that was let let it over, heading to two thousand twenty-five. And we're sitting here now in October, so good point, Donna. You know, all, you could say all that, a big chunk has been spent. Now, note ten's an important one for any mayor and councillor, because note ten says, okay, how are we, I can't remember when the next municipal election is. Let's be twenty twenty-say, eh? So what are we leaving behind as a council member and in in reserve funds? So here it is, right here, and you've got seven hundred forty-six thousand. Now, as a council, seven hundred forty-six thousand for for, you know, your budget of two hundred thousand dollars a month. You know, you look at that and say, okay, well, Dean, that's about, you know, three, three and a half months. Okay, not bad. Then I started looking at the nature of it. Okay, working funds, well, that's just general, that really is nothing. You know, building, okay, fire, roads, landfill, a Gompin nursing home, again, gotta try and figure, understand what that is. Emergency recreation. So it's a chance for mayor and councillor at some point in two thousand twenty, but before the end of this year, to look at those reserve funds, just say, okay, you know, you have every right by motion, council motion, to rejig that. You can't change the total, everyone. It's seven hundred forty-six thousand. Oh, sorry, I take that back. You can always add to reserves. If if you think you're having a surplus year, you could take out reserves if you think that you had an unusual expense, that you don't wanna get to come out of two thousand twenty-five revenue. But, you know, certainly reallocating or rejigging some of the the descriptions, that's entirely at the the discretion of you, okay?
It seems, if I may, is there a best practice or a rule of thumb for reserves in terms of number of months?
Yeah, that that, that's bang on right. So, John, the generally what I have said in the past to A M O and M F O A and stuff like that is three to six months. Three to six months worth of expenses. You guys are two hundred thousand a month. That's six hundred thousand dollars. You're sitting at seven hundred and forty-six thousand. But my three to six months rule of thumb doesn't include capital. So if you're a councillor that's saving to build an arena, okay, as an example, okay, in Calvin, or a, what's called, community center, okay? That's different. So that that reserve would be a capital, like, you would call that recreation center, and you'd have a separate reserve for that. Other than that, like, all these ones that you have in here are mostly operating monies, John. And so I would, I would like you to have somewhere between six hundred thousand and one point two million, makes sense? From three to six months in reserves, and you're sitting at seven hundred forty-six.
And also, some reserves, like, like planning reserves in lieu of power plan, they're designated reserves that are legislated. Just wanna bring that up.
That's right. So in in the page before, that the plan, the recreation, the monies you're talking about under the Planning Act, that twenty-five thousand is not here. It's subject to legislation. Same thing with gas tax, same thing with OSIF money and NORDs money. Those are monies you can have in your bank account at the end of the year. You haven't spent it yet. But it's not, it's not your reserve fund as a council. It's subject to external conditions. Very well said. Note eleven, we've left in here, I'm gonna read it to you, in two thousand sixteen, the municipality, in conjunction with the town of Matawan and the townships of Papeno, Cameron, and Matawan, in a green principle, to jointly contribute three point eight million over twenty-five year period for the capital redevelopment of the Gompin nursing home. The payment terms, including the distribution of the cost amongst municipalities have not yet been determined. So I I didn't change the wording. I don't think Donna changed the wording, so I don't, I don't know if there's any comments on that. My understanding is that you're gonna have to come to some clarity around that. A Gompin nursing home has already been redeveloped, has it not? Yes, okay. So it's not, that's not, I'm just letting, that's not in accounts payable, it's not in liabilities, it's not anywhere. It's a commitment note just saying, we agree in principle that, you know, we're gonna provide some contributions towards that. And you you haven't signed anything, so there's no legal contract or or anything to that of that nature that I'm aware of. And hopefully you're gonna say, yes, that's right, Dean.
Just motions of council to contribute, as you say, and that's pretty much the wording.
In principle, right. So note twelve, it's just how you do your your budget for the year. Note thirteen is how much you, how much of the pension, so any pension contributions you made on behalf of the staff? There's only six thousand. I don't think you're, you're not homers, are you?
Yeah, so nine point five percent.
Right. Note fourteen, there are a number of statements claimed. So note fourteen, you have to disclose, the state, the accounting standards are very clear. You must disclose if you have litigation against you, statements of claim. So you're, as a municipality, you're saying, yeah, like, I don't, I don't have any municipal claims that don't. So yes, you do, where you're not sure of the success of the claimant or the applicant, because you're the defendant. If you're not sure what the result's gonna be, like, it rule in your favor or not in your favor. And you're not sure about the dollar amounts, and you know, you have to disclose the fact that we've got some. And we will record the impact of those claims in the year that we, that they become known. Not necessarily the year you write a cheque, if if you do write a cheque, but in the year that you have some certainty as to the 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 results of the the action, as well as a good estimate of the dollar amount. So there, like I said, there is an accrual in your books, but it should be vague enough that it doesn't necessarily, you know, point to one particular claim. Do you understand what I'm saying? And and you've got note fourteen, which is general enough to say, okay, we do have claims. We book where we're, we're pretty sure we're gonna owe, we don't book when we're not sure. And that's the accounting standard. Note fifteen, subsequent events. So back in June, you had this very, what I would call a severe weather event, causing significant flooding, fallen trees and road washouts in your municipality, prompting the declaration of a state of emergency. Emergency response measures, including evacuation, support and infrastructure repair, resulted in an estimated cost approximately five hundred thousand dollars. It's a subsequent event because it happened in two thousand twenty-five, before we released these financial statements. And it's gonna affect your 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 bank account. Now, for now, we didn't add to it, like, we are applying through the Ontario.
M J, so they, this goes faster than me.
Okay, the disaster relief program. And I believe you have, if this, if this doesn't fall in, what does? Into that disaster relief program that the province has. The problem or the frustration, Donna, if you want to go on more around that, is around the time and the the different, you know, checks and balances you have to go through to get reimbursed for costs that you are actually incurring. So. Anyway, I'm sure you guys have already had talks about that. For now, your honour, financial statements is drawing the reader's attention to the fact that, listen, this did happen, it's gonna have a material effect on our municipality. I'm perfectly fine if you wanna add in the sentence, Donna, if councils, if council would like. When when I sign these and you sign these financial statements, I'm perfectly fine saying that, you know, the municipality, the municipality intends on applying through the blah, you know, program for the province of Ontario. Okay, just so that, otherwise, the reader's gonna go, where are they gonna come up with five hundred thousand dollars? And especially if you're moving banks, you know, the bank may say, well, where's that money gonna come from?
And you don't know the results of the review either.
No, right, right now, you don't. So you intend on applying to through that particular program. I believe it'll be successful, like a hundred percent successful, but again, you know, it's a, it's a pain, right? I had some, you can bring up the other presentation now.
Okay, then.
I had some personal experience with with what happened. I was not here, but we did come and pick up. I think we picked up, no, no, two people that got airflow out, then flew to North Bay and we drove them out to get their car or whatever the case, I think we drove them out here because their vehicle was still out here, because they had to get air lifted out of the park. But awful. That happened. So, your worship, I'll turn it back to you for a second before I just, I only, this presentation, I just need five minutes. But are there any questions on your financial statements for for Donna or for us?
I I have not. Very interesting and thorough presentation, though, Dean. Thank you very much. It's a, it's a lot to digest. This is a draft. How soon will the final, are we talking months away?
For goodness sakes, no. A resolution by you guys tonight, and Donna signs a letter. You can have them this week.
Yeah, resolution, said that you could accept or not.
Yeah, you've got resolution on on your books for agenda for tonight.
Okay.
Yep, we're we're waiting for a signed rep rep letter, a resolution by you guys, and then letting me know if you wanna add that that sentence that I just talked about. That's it. That's all we're waiting for.
Okay, does anybody else in council have any questions?
I just wanna make a point, thanks again to your staff for being so patient. We were still reeling with the, you know, the books from two thousand twenty-three leading into twenty twenty-four, so there was a lot. We did a lot sort of blind and on paper here, and to see, you know, at the end of the day that we came in on by Ben and Target was an absolute, great feat by all staff, all staff in management, in the seat of choice, for those two off now.
And note fifteen, of course, that refers to two thousand twenty-five, so does it really matter if we add or don't add?
No, I I I'm fine with it as is, if that makes it easier. But but certainly, if you get a question from a reader of those financial statements saying, well, how are you gonna finance this? We're gonna apply through the whatever program, just like we said. Let me know what to think about that.
That was my thing. We've mentioned it twice, and you've mentioned it, it's, we'll decide forward and we should put it in, okay?
Okay, so I just need you to email me the.
Okay.
The wording of the sentence.
And is it, is everyone careful with the Gompin statement? There's nothing in there that that has to change?
It was there last year, too. I think that, I think you were only for discussion.
It's been there since two thousand sixteen. Yeah.
Okay, I I'm fine. And if nobody in council has to be.
It would be great to to pull that note if something has happened.
I'm not just removing the note.
Well, exactly, that's what, that's what I'm asking. So it'd be great to pull the note if something is, if council has done something to say, you know what, we're actually, we're going, we're rescinding that, that motion.
Well, we haven't rescinded it, but it it was, the motion was stating that that among the became due, should we be excused totally from Castle Home, you know?
Which has not happened.
Yeah.
Which has not happened, so.
But the motion doesn't, isn't worded, that may.
No.
No, the motion is worded exactly as it's written here, that council has an ob, has a, in principle obligation.
Well, then let's remove the note.
So I think, I think what it, we missed the discussion, I know the dean was hoping to have, you need to, as a council, how are you going to deal with this motion that was made prior to coming here, which would mean that you should have a discussion with other people about.
Yeah, yeah, my comment, Donna, to you was, from our standpoint, we cannot remove the note unless you have a a motion rescinding that motion from two thousand sixteen. And you need to talk to someone, someone at Vegasino or, I don't know, someone that has municipal legal experience. So, because I don't, I'm not quite sure, what I, what we need to see is the original motion to the sixteen. How do you then rescind that so it's no longer a constructive, I guess, no longer of something that's out there? And I'm not a lawyer, I don't.
My suggestion then is, as far as this report, just leave it as 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 is, and and then we'll we'll deal with that in the coming months. Yes?
Yeah, it would require, I believe, a a meeting of, you know, the mayors and and where did this come from and what are you.
Well, I think how we can do it by on its own, Donna, I think we should probably do it. We just maybe need to just verify.
I think you need some advice.
Verify contract. If there's no contract.
And there is no.
Then we should just revisit the original motion, if we can find it, and we have to remove it or rescind it. Right. But for this statement, we leave it as is, yes?
You have to, because.
Yeah, yeah, because you didn't do anything in two thousand twenty-four, right?
So, so, and Donna, you'll add the the paragraph that Amber will be contracted, contacted and applied for for the.
To offset partial costs.
Perfect. Okay, so just a couple of last things, your worship and members of council, so.
This one's faster.
Yes, it will be. So it starts off, you have, you, I mean, I think everyone has an electronic copy of this.
It came into like, yeah.
Okay, no, no, but you can put it into their portal or their.
Oh, yeah, everyone's.
I just wanna make sure you guys have a copy of this. This is the results document of of the audit. It goes through, talks about the audit team, keep going, roles and responsibilities, which I've spoken to. You know, talks about fraud, which is an audit issue, not an accounting issue. So the audit issue is, well, did you, we're confirming to you, did you perform tests on a proactive basis, looking for misappropriation of assets or looking for aggressive management behavior? The answer is yes, we did. And no findings. It also talks about on the next page, some of the more significant items that I talked about in the financials. Next page down, one more. One more. There it is. And in terms of tax revenue, which we talked about tonight, in terms of, you know, has the tax revenue been recognized in the right accounting period? It's, for your municipalities, ninety-nine percent of the time municipalities get that one right, because it's based on a on a calendar year basis. But there are occasions where, especially if you had a large commercial taxpayer that made a, what's what's the wording in your world? Significant change. What's what's the wording in your world? A significant change. Like I used to give an example years ago that, say Walmart went from twenty thousand square feet to thirty thousand square feet. If they did that during the year before the assessment came out, you'd have the right to to increase your revenue for that taxpayer. You understand what I'm saying? Cause they've made, they made a material change. And it was just a matter of time before you issue your, what's it called?
Assessment?
Yes, but the. Yeah, but it it the property tax assessment, but it's it's a change. To to the to the property tax assessment. When, you know, when you're, when you deal with, um, when people appeal their property taxes and stuff.
Oh, right, yeah, with impact.
With it with impact, yeah. So you had the way the accounting standard is written, and this is, this is about six years old now. If that was the case. Now, that doesn't mean if Joe and Sally put a deck on in the back in twenty twenty four, should you increase theirs by twelve thousand dollars or, no, sorry. Twelve, twelve dollars, you know, no. They're looking for real significant changes, which really impacts a lot of municipalities down in. Uh, areas where there's a lot of. Redevelopment. Management override, we're looking at journal entries, accounts payable, we're looking for proper cutoff, making sure that you have twelve months of expenses, not eleven, not thirteen. The landfill, well, it's got some technical components to the how we calculate it and then we have to rely a little bit on. A little bit, we have to rely on an engineer for calculating the uh. Square footage. For the cubic, cubic meters, pardon me, it's utilized. And then, of course, the capital, the castle home liability, which is just this. Very large standout liability on your on your financial statements. On the next page, you will get a management letter in the next couple of weeks that'll talk about. Betterments to the accounting, and we've talked to Donna about everything already, but we'll put it in a letter format. And if you keep going, you'll see some of the adjustments that Donna was talking about that were being worked on. So. And again, don't, don't get all panicked about it, keep going. I mean, it looks like a lot. And so this is between the time that we got the first trial balance, the opening, the. Closing trial balance, books of account from Calvin, to the time that things closed, you keep scrolling down, these were the adjustments that needed to be recorded. By one hundred percent, you can put this in the minutes, expect that that to be materially shrunk for twenty twenty.
It was a switch in the bookkeeping systems that we were undergoing.
That's right.
After twenty twenty two, twenty three.
Yeah. But again, as a mayor and council, I want you to to support the fact and say, listen, I I would like there to be very little adjustments next year. Like that, that should be your commitment as mayor and council. You don't want auditors coming making adjustments. You can keep scrolling. The rest of this here just walks through and talks about, well, where are we at right now in the world with with regards to auditing? Is there anything new we should be aware of? As a municipality. You know, there used to be, there was a slide in here on tariffs and geopolitical and. What's that called? Sustainability and E S G and and K P I's and things of that nature and some really cool. What are these called?
Q R.
Q R colts, where you take a picture with your camera and you can actually do some some P V, okay, as council members, so. I'm not sure if it's, if that's in your bylaws or not, but. Um, with some with some municipalities, council has to do so many hours of professional development. Um, and so this would count. Like actually reading some of these these things, whether it's on trending topics, asset retirement obligations, key changes to financial reporting. Environmental, social governance insights, public sector insights, these are all things that, again, as council, that they would be. In my mind, they would be included in your professional development program. Okay, then at the back for some appendices, one is me signing a letter to you saying we're independent. Uh, one is a copy of the rep letter that Donna will sign and provide to us. For the next day. And then you'll get the financial statements. Okay, and then we'll make a commitment, oh, sorry. You have asked for a quote, so we provided a quote, so. What I would encourage you to do was, you know, set something up with whoever your auditor is, if it's B D O, great, but someone else, that's great, that's, I shouldn't say it's great, boo, but that's fine. We'll we'll we will survive. And but just try to get back in front of you by by the end of April.
Yay, love it.
Okay? Because because the books are all, I think, Donna, the books are all caught up.
Yeah, they are, yeah, now that we've.
They're all caught up to August, I think.
Yeah. Books for this.
Your your books for Calvin or September?
Yeah, we're we're right on.
You're right, okay, okay, they're up to.
Twenty twenty four. Transition from twenty twenty three still that is an issue.
Wait, well, the the one thing that we would have to work on, Donna, is is the A R O. We'll have to like measure the landfill and make sure that we've. Uh, inventoried all your buildings to see if there's asbestos. If there is, we need a cost of cleaning it cleaning it up.
And that we've talked about that at council before and that requires professionals to come in and.
Okay, well, we need that, cause you can't keep, the ministry's gonna bug you again, you can't keep living with that qualification.
Well, and they're not going to fund our O C F, they won't.
Until you get rid of that.
Until we get the A R O mark.
Okay, well, with that one firm might be so, should be able to do that.
Well, the landfill is done.
Yeah, yeah, but they should be able to help with the the building condition assessment or. It it really, how many buildings did we have in nineteen seventy in Calvin? Okay. Then let's list all those buildings, because chances are they have.
Asbestos.
Asbestos. Which which chances, there's a cost to. The the problem is, the accounting center doesn't care, the the problem with asbestos, and I'm not an expert, but my understanding is if you don't touch it. Life is grand. As soon as you touch it, that's a problem. And it it requires money for remedied. Okay, so in order to be here tonight, I just have one last question. I I have no gas in my car, so like, how far is the gas station? Do I have to go to Papano? Not not.
You have to go to Madawa or to Highway ninety four. Corbiel there. Corbiel is gonna be a closer.
Oh, it will be, Corbiel's closer.
Well, the closest would be Madawar.
Yeah, I'm telling you, I have no gas, then I can't, I won't be able to make it to Corbiel. My Google thinks that to turn on Adam Street, turn on Adam Street.
Dean, we're gonna have to bring you back in a car in the passenger seat because last year, do you remember, it was dark and you didn't make it.
No, I know that. The first year I came, I came the right way, but then one of you, count who I love, all of you, said, no, no, Dean, take, um.
What's that called?
That road, kiosk. So tonight I was like, I'm taking kiosk. Well, kiosk led me to, yeah, no, no, it's halfway to Brampton, I I. No!
I got all kinds of gas cans in my.
I know. Yeah.
Uh, Dean, the fire chief has cast the power, I think he'll help you.
I took gas with the bag. Yeah, Dean, but your vehicle list kilometers to empty?
It just, yeah, but but then once the light comes on, it doesn't say that anymore.
Ninety kilometers before.
Usually get, you get what?
Ninety.
Fifty, ninety, eighty, somewhere around.
But how long has the light been on?
The light, the light came on when I was in the.
If you're not just Paul, listen, we don't know, darn that happened.
And I know what you're thinking, that I'm an income poop. I actually, I assumed that the one in them.
Until next week.
Yeah.
Long enough gas will be a long time. Yeah, okay. Gas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Madawar is, what, thirty five, forty kilometers? Corbiel Corners is exactly forty kilometers from here. So if you can make forty kilometers, I don't take you to Corbiel Corners.
It's a key on in Boston.
Sign at the corner says Madawar's nineteen.
I got to work him down.
It's here to the sign at the corner. Yeah, no, that's that's to the, the signs go by township, the all of township hall. Township halls at the other side of Madawar. Okay, gas stations on the side. I'll just follow Sheila.
I'm in an electric car. Thank you so much, Dean and Sheila.
Sheila, if you run, if you run out of power, then we're really.
Yeah, then we're in trouble, but.
Thank you very much.
So the quickest way is.
That was all.
Turn left, we just began at seventeen. So when you get to the stop, you can just take a left.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like go out here, left and then left.
Wait, okay, then you're.
All right. Hi, guys.
All right, so. We need to decide if we're accepting this, of course. Uh, I'll, I need to move it a second and and then I'll read the case of accounts for Morgan. Councilor Manson. Whereas B D O presented the the draft audited financial statements for the corporation of the municipality of Calvin. For the fiscal year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And whereas council has reviewed. The audited financial statements and the audited report. Now therefore be resolved that the council for the corporation and municipality of Calvin hereby accepts the audited financial statements. For the fiscal year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And further. That the mayor and chief administrative officer are hereby authorized to sign the audited financial statements on behalf of the council. And further, the council reappoint B D O as the auditor for the fiscal years twenty twenty five to twenty twenty eight inclusively. Questions, comments? Right, call it to both, all those in favor? And that looks like that is carried. Donna, can you uh? Uh, just read the next thing I just happened to spare for a second.
Okay, the fire services protection reimbursement transfer payment agreement. So this is an annual agreement. Um, and so we the motion, whereas the office of the fire marshal has established a reimbursement program to compensate municipalities. For providing fire protection services in unincorporated areas of Ontario based on eligible fault type criteria. As set up by the fire marshal and whereas the previous agreement to deliver fire protection services. Neighboring unincorporated areas expired March. Twenty twenty five and whereas the office of the fire marshals. Have only recently submitted a new annual agreement for presentation to council. And whereas the municipality of Calvin wishes to enter into such an agreement for the provision of fire protection services. For the neighboring unincorporated areas for the period March seventeen, twenty twenty five, March sixteen, twenty twenty six. Now therefore be resolved that council for the corporation of municipalities, Calvern, enact as follows. That the mayor and CEO are hereby authorized to execute a fire protection services reimbursement transfer payment. Agreement with his met, see the King in the right of Ontario as represented by the office of the fire marshal. For the term March seventeen, twenty twenty five to March fifteen, twenty twenty six. That the fire chief shall have full discretion to determine if and when to respond. To fire hall in unincorporated areas and shall ensure all eligible incidents are imported in accordance with the agreement. Any discussion on that one? Okay, we need a mover and a seconder. The seconder, right? All those in favor? And that's carried.
And can I ask you to fix a display on the laptop? I'm looking at myself and. Two screens in slow motion, it's kind of distracting. I'm not sure what you did with the, there we go. That's good. Thank you.
Well, that's around eight point three.
So the next item is the mutual aid agreement with Papano Cameron. Uh, mover to second or two to discuss this, uh, counts. Councilor Morgan and Councilor Grant. Does anyone have any questions about this before we did? The.
Just for doing.
Just for doing that, go ahead.
That was my question, is the same agreement or it changed?
Yeah, yeah, it's been changed since.
Changes. The old agreement was back from ninety nine, it's very outdated and had some. Uh, costs that current to it and stuff like that, so we removed that, so it's more of a reciprocal basis. And. It's just a lot more modernized, there's actual legal. Points to it.
Essentially the same, except for those costs were there.
Yeah, we.
There was a hundred dollars before.
They clarified some stuff. There was, the old agreement also showed that we had covered. Um, a number of addresses for Papano, which. Like most I've passed around the other departments and they were even unaware of this, so. I mean, it's a twenty five year old agreement, so. Um, so with that was removed as well, because even TAC wasn't aware of that, so they would normally, if that was in your auto aid agreement, then. Our dispatch would be made aware and those addresses would be dispatched to us and on Papano. So it just kind of seemed unnecessary with. The department, so we're running things nowadays, so. Those were removed and.
And so this bylaw is also the same one going to Papano Cameron, so the fire chief have chiefs have agreed as the C E O have agreed to bring this forward. The council, so shouldn't expect any opposition.
Yeah.
The council wanted.
The old one was just for one year at a time, I didn't see the need for that either, I think. So we just put a a statement in here saying. If at any time they want to close the agreement, then we just fly us with sixty days notice, so.
Any other questions? All right, so. The. Statement is whereas the Calvin Township Fire Department was established by bylaw number five sixty five and whereas the Papano Cameron Township. Fire Department is established by bylaw number ninety two dash zero five and whereas section twenty of the municipal act. Of the the Fire Protection Prevention Act nineteen ninety seven, as amended from time to time, authorizes. An agreement between said parties respecting the cooperative use. Of certain firefighting reserves to improve response time and fire protection services within their respective territories. And whereas both parties desire to enter into an automatic aid agreement. Now therefore be resolved that. Council for the corporation, the municipality of Calvin, authorizes the mayor, C E O and fire chief. To enter into an automatic aid agreement with the township of Papano Cameron. Uh, as outlined in the corresponding bylaw and further that any. Uh, prior automatic aid or mutual aid agreements between these parties be repealed. And further that bylaw twenty twenty five dash forty four shall come into force. And affect immediately upon the signing thereof of all parties. And well, it's just kind of, okay, all those in favor? And that is carried. So, uh, the next item on the agenda, eight point four. Is the very thorough report by the fire chief and I'll turn it over to Jordan who. Uh, go through his report.
Uh, this is my report for the month of September. Um, we still have fifteen active, uh, our personnel, no new members. Remember, we only had three calls, one in B C, one to fire and one explosion, let's say, on medical assistance. As far as our fire fire mandatory training as of today. We now have a total of three members who have fully completed our mandatory mandatory training. And we're on track to have three more done by the end of this month. We were supposed to have them done last month, um, just. Off with the old family, I know they're busy right now. They have all of our stuff, they just basically need to send their. Letters back. Um, for training this month, we're focusing on interior firefighting heavily. We've been using a burn can quite a bit. Um, creating like fire interior fire simulations. Members are studying, uh, and understanding flow paths, thermal layering and flashover events. We are still doing our online training for vector solutions program, which is working out pretty well. The guys are able to do that on at home on their spare time. Uh, I attended the mutual aid meeting that was held in Boston on September twenty fourth and was. Deputy Chief Chase Wall who took me there. Meeting there, there were really good information, especially. Um, with the park and everything that happened, it was, uh. They were, you know, super impressed, they had a little conversation about that as well and. Upcoming, there is a meeting specifically designed around the park, so there. Mutual aids, basically gathering all the chiefs in the area, they have everybody come from. Tomogami, South River, like all over the place, so that was pretty good. For fire prevention this month, we attended the Madaway Information Expo and it was held with Mike Rodner Edens. We handed out lots of packages which, uh. I had put together, I think most of them are attached in this report. Um, and we also had tons of items from the Fire Safety Council of Ontario that we handed out to the public as well. It was, I figured it was a really good place to do it, cause it's a pretty localized place, most of our. Community members go there. And then all of our ministry reports are up to date. And the only other thing I added on this report was the, uh. I kind of put a little thing on the back, the other things to report and it was just, uh.
The truth of the new front.
Yeah, so I just wrote to Cal Fire Car and would also like to report that the rescue truck has been delivered to the fire hall. And put into service, it is mostly outfitted, under budget. And we're just waiting for the delivery of some items, further a flashing light kit. And C F D would like to thank the community members and members of this council for their support. There's a picture of it on there.
Thank you.
About it.
You were probably able to take that to the mutual aid agreement, to the mutual meeting.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that report and. Well, thank you for that report and uh. Keep up the good work, um, that just brings me to a letter of commendation. That uh was delivered to us by uh the O P P. And I would just like to read that into the record, if I may. It reads re exceptional courage teamwork and professionalism during severe weather response. Samuel de Champlain and Kiosh Provincial Park incidents. On June twenty first, twenty twenty five, during the late evening hours and extreme weather and struck the Samuel de Champlain provincial park area. This fast moving and violent storm caused the widespread downfall of trees trapping multiple park visitors within their trailers. Inflicting injuries and inflicting significant structural and environmental damage throughout the park. As the storm progressed, floodwaters rose rapidly, creating dangerous and unstable conditions. And significantly uh impeding access to emergency responders. The combined spread of down trees, heavy rainfall, flooding and darkness posed a grave risk. To both park occupants and first responders attempting to enter the area. From the earliest moments of the incident, local fire and medical personnel played a critical role in stabilizing the scene. Calvin Fire Department, Madawa Fire Department, Bonfield Fire Department, paramedic, uh paramedic services. And North Bay O P P officers were among the first on scene responding to nine one one calls and reports of injuries. Despite the debris filled, low visibility and high risk environment. These first responders courageously entered the park and moved from site to site. Reaching in injured campers and extra uh extracting them from danger. Their efforts allowed paramedics to treat and transport victims to area hospitals. Undoubtedly preventing further harm or fatalities. By the next day, June the twenty second, twenty twenty five, the broader regional impact of the storm became fully apparent. Two separate sections of highway seventeen, both east and west of Samuel de Champlain Park suffered major flooding and water damage. These conditions led to full highway closures disrupting traffic flow. And complicating emergency operations across the region, the North Bay O P P. Auxiliary and cadets stepped up to immediately to assist. With highway closures allowing frontline officers to remain focused on the critical search and rescue efforts. Meanwhile, emergency crews inside Samuel de Champlain Park continued to work through the night and into the morning. Cutting fallen trees and clearing debris to access the park's interior. At the same time, the Ontario Provincial Police, the O P P. Dispatch had received seventy seven calls with service, including ambulance assists, dangerous condition reports. And property damage complaints. In response, the Northeastern Region Emergency Response Team, E R T. Was deployed despite having just completed a two week missing persons search operation in Webford. Or sorry, Webb Wood and being scheduled for their only day off, stacked home with buffet. And all E R T members voluntarily returned to duty without hesitation. They were joined by canine units and save units and members of the North Bay O P P detachment. These teams conducted a full scale search in the park under punishing conditions, temperatures over thirty degrees, humidity of a hundred percent. Flooded trails and widespread storm damage over a period of more than ten hours. They searched and documented every campsite, ensuring that all park visitors were accounted for. In parallel, O P P aviation services played a critical support role through their day. Their air assets enabled real time aerial assessments at the scene. And coordinated search efforts on the ground, the aerial support proved instrumental in both protecting responders. Safety and enhancing operational efficiency for ground teams navigating the chaotic landscape below. As Samuel de Champlain Provincial Park operations reached resolution, a secondary emergency developed. Highway six thirty, the only access route to Kiosh Provincial Park had suffered multiple flash floods. And washouts rendering the road completely impassable, the washouts were so severe. That reopening the highway was not expected for seven to ten days. Affected with Lee stranding more than a hundred individuals and their pets in kiosk with no all alternate exit. Without delay, the incident commander, E R T team leader and O P P aviation services collaborated to formulate. And execute an aerial evacuation plan. Utilizing O P P air resources, they successfully extracted stranded campers. And animals from Kiosh Provincial Park and transported them to safety. Avoiding what could have become a prolonged and dangerous isolation event in a remote location. This letter formally recognizes. And commends the remarkable response, coordination and sacrifice shown by the following. The Calvin Fire Department, which is the host command agency. Madawa Fire Department, North Bay Fire Department, East Ferris Fire Department, Bonfield Fire Department. West Nipissing Fire Department, Chief R Mackey, the South River Macar. Uh, Fire Department Mutual Aid Coordinator. The District of Nipissing Paramedic, Paramedic Services, the North Bay O P P detachment officers, auxiliaries and cadets. The Northern Region Emergency Response Team, the E R T, the O P P K nine unit. The O P P save unit, the O P P A uh aviation services, Ontario Park Staff and Rangers and Emergency Management Ontario. These individuals and teams exhibited exceptional professionalism, extraordinary courage. And an unwavering commitment to public safety under the most demanding and hazardous of conditions. Their collective efforts resulted in the safe extraction of uh injured persons, the full accounting of park guests. And the successful evacuation of stranded campers. All while maintaining a standard of conduct that reflects the highest ideal of service. We extend our deepest gratitude and commendation to all who participated in this complex and heroic response. Sincerely Inspector William McMullen, Ontario Provincial Police, over. Nice way to end your report.
Make sure to include that in our end draft application.
We just have to accept that report, I need a mover and a seconder. The councillor Morton, councillor Grant, seconded. Now therefore be resolved, the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin received and accepts the September twenty twenty five fire chief report, call in favor. Carry it. Uh, Remembrance Day Ceremony there, uh, as it is shown in the agenda, we have two invites. Uh, for the Bonfield and East Ferris uh um. Memorial Day uh festivities or.
Remembrance Day ceremonies?
Ceremonies, thank you. And one is on the, I believe, the ninth and then the tenth and then Madawas on the eleventh. Um, uh, before we even get to to decide if anybody or who is attending, um. The time and mileage will be uh compensated for anyone attending or not compensated. Uh, as a meeting as per council, uh, did anyone just have any thoughts on on that? If.
We just need some clear direction because last year there was some confusion about what people were claiming to announce.
Also, and I think it should be consistent with last year, uh, just provide some consistency. Um, you know, and I don't think, I don't think, in my opinion, now's not the time to make it uh that change. Uh, I think it should be uh as per we decided last year, so would be compensated. Uh, and that's what was happened last year.
And then.
My only question here, is it by direction of the, are you assigning somebody to go?
We're going to get to that.
Or just if anybody wants to go?
We're gonna get to that.
In relation to these, like if all of us want to go, are we all putting in for it?
No, I don't think so.
Well, no, I think that's their next discussion, I think is who's going and.
Right, oh, okay.
I think there's up to us to decide if we're gonna send one or more, but.
Or attend them all or not.
Sure, yeah.
If the council directs one person to go, then that person. Would be compensated is what you're saying?
I think it should, yes.
And that's where their bylaw needs to get some, because the remuneration by law says meetings.
And this isn't necessarily a meeting.
And that's where we have.
It's not, there's debate though in previous years and we had, I I believe we had set a a a.
If you were directed by.
Standard that should be adhered uh in this case.
Okay.
That's, that's my feeling until some formal change is made to that bylaw.
We said that if you were directed by resolution to go to something, that's why they made resolutions for Richard and whoever to go against.
And that's why we're just being sure that we're capturing it in a in the motion so that there's no question.
Alright, so what I'm getting at this point is that. Yes, it will be compensated for this person who's named in the resolution to go, correct?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm supporting.
Well, but the the then we have to decide that we're sending two. But you can't just say.
I think this is gonna go, this is the first decision and then we can go.
Right.
Decide the rest, it's my my take.
Alright, so. Uh, Bonfield, I believe, is on the ninth. East Ferris is on the tenth, or do I have it backwards?
Yeah, there is, we can have a beat, yeah, the. National Bonfield Ceremony be held on Sunday, November ninth at ten forty seven AM, so who are we appointing if anyone to go there?
Well, first of all, I'd ask him, would there be anybody willing to go to the Bonfield ceremony?
They can go to anyone that you don't want to go to or somebody else.
I'm free.
Well, let me throw this out there, uh, traditionally, I, you know. I like tradition, traditionally the mayor had attended the Madawas ceremony, I don't know if you have interest in that or not.
I can go to the 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 Madawas one trip.
Um, you know, I I I'm willing to, I think it makes sense to send one person, I'm going to. Last year I had attended the East Ferris.
Right.
I don't have to attend these Ferris, but I would likely be willing to do that again. So if anybody.
Councillor Latimer, councillor Manson, either of you want to attend on behalf of Calvin at their ceremony?
No, I'll pass, sounds like councillor Morton is interested, but. You know, I'll pass.
Said I am available, I didn't say it was.
I'll nominate you.
It's okay, we can nominate you too, John.
Um, I, I could attend, um. Well, I would be available for the uh East Ferris one on the Monday, but um. It's, it's, you know. If someone has more enthusiasm about it, then that's perfectly fine.
So what I'm hearing right now is Bill, you're doing the Bonfield one.
No, I said I'll go to anyone nobody wants to go to.
Well, so nobody, nobody said any of the whole.
It's Bill and Bonfield who's interested.
Oh, okay.
And uh, um.
And I'll do Madawas. And then it's between the two of you and it's for East Ferris.
You know, I I I, you know, um. You know, obviously I'm welcome to attend any of these if I choose as, you know, not as a representative, so um. You know, John, it's a, I'll leave it squarely with you, if you want the East Ferris uh ceremony, you're welcome, if not, it's, that's fine.
So you're doing these first then?
I can do these first, yeah.
Okay. So we uh have John doing this, uh, attending uh on behalf of Calvin, you're there as a representative of the of the. You know, you're not just there as a guest, anybody can go to any of these events, if if everybody wants to go to Madawas. On the eleventh, you're all welcome to come, but somebody has to be their official.
After this motion is passed, we have to send them who the representatives are, we have to send them the name of the individual.
So.
That's why we need the motion to name people.
Right, so right now we have Bill Morton. For Bonfield and we have uh John Manson for East Ferris and Richard Gould for Madawas. You were.
But anyway, I thought it would be the mayor for all three. And then if anybody else, others, just my opinion about it.
I like it this way better.
And just so that you know, all your research there waiting for you, because they don't have to pick a reset when you go, they're waiting for you.
Alright, I need a mover and a seconder for this resolution. Councillor Grant and councillor Manson. Whereas the township of Bonfield and the municipality of East Ferris have invited the corporation of municipality of Calvin to participate in their Remembrance Day ceremonies. And whereas the Madawas Legion Service is one that municipality has traditionally traditionally uh uh participate. Uh, participated in, we have no invitation. And whereas the township of Bonfield Ceremony will be held on Sunday, the ninth. At ten forty five, whereas the municipality of East Ferris Ceremony will be held Monday, the tenth. At ten thirty, and whereas the town of Madawas Ceremony will be held on November the eleventh, twenty twenty five, now therefore be resolved. That by way of this resolution to represent the municipality, uh. Councillor Bill Morton will attend the ceremony in Bonfield. Uh, councillor John Manson will attend the ceremony in East Ferris. And uh, Mayor Richard Gould will attend at the ceremony in Madawas. As a representative of the corporation of the municipality of Calvin, and furthermore that their time mileage be compensated. Uh, and uh, as a meeting as per council remuneration policies. And further, the council direct staff to participate, uh, purchase wreaths for each ceremony. Us uh spending up to a maximum of seventy five dollars per wreath. Questions, comments, none, all those in favor? C O report on the regulatory amendments made to the amounts payable by municipalities for O P P policing.
So just a little bit of a heads up that we've been given um some advance. Warning that the increase may be up to five point seven, or sorry, eleven percent in twenty twenty six. So it's not impacting us now, I just want you to be aware that we've received some advance notice. Um, that that will represent a thirty two percent increase since twenty twenty two for the taxpayer in Calvin. It was just presented as sort of a little bit of an advance notice to you, we were just advised.
Uh, up to eleven, but they're guaranteeing it won't exceed eleven.
Exceed eleven, which up to eleven typically means that we should expect an eleven percent.
Um, remember the inspector saying that was, it was embarrassing how much they were gonna get a raise.
Well, it went that high in twenty twenty five and due to the pressure applied to by all municipalities across Ontario. And those lobby groups such as uh, you know, Miss Flo, you know, all of our, those people that we pay, all those other groups. To represent us, the lobby on our behalf that was down, but as you said, councillor Morton, we were sort of expecting that it would. That it would have catch up eventually.
Alright, need to accept the report, I need a mover and a seconder, councillor Morton and councillor Latimer. Now therefore be resolved, the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin accepts the reporting title, C O report. C O thirty four dash twenty twenty five regulatory amendments made to amounts payable by municipalities for O P P policing. And information purposes, all those in favor? And I as well, so that is carried. Uh, next is the um, C O report uh for the application for funding of community emergency preparedness grant. I I think we shouldn't do this, I I think we should just give up money.
They say throw to us last year, so.
They did.
So this is essentially the same application, uh, we're asking for ten radios, a repeater, five tablets, five tablets is new. Uh, some of the things that we learned as a result of the storm, that tablets inside of those vehicles would be a good thing. Um, and that includes for public works because public works is always a part of whatever fire in a larger storm. Uh, might respond to, uh, two row closure trailers, something else that's new. And we're only checking one box this year, and last time we checked all that applied because we said that without these radios and. A new radio system that every emergency would be impacted and we learned through the storm that in fact every emergency was impacted. For all kinds of reasons, but this year the application has changed. I'm assuming that means that we weren't the only ones in the province who made the same mistake and said this is so important that it applies to any sort of storm. Um, and they're only allowing us to focus in on one this year, so you can't submit the application without, you know, you can only do one, so that application's value is forty five thousand four hundred dollars. We will learn the results in February, so uh. Chief Jordan and I had a chat about this, we recall that we had decided that the M T O funds would be reserved for radio this year, any income that they would bring in. We would put them towards the radio, I did assert him that uh if he should choose to not do that in anticipation of. A positive, which we won't know until the new fiscal year. That we would not, we would still leave that M T O dollars in the reserves to be spent next year because we can't. Purchase these radios in advance of knowing the results of the application, which means that, you know, waiting a little while longer for. Purchase these radios in advance of knowing the results of the application, which means that, you know, waiting a little while longer for. Fire department to obtain those radios and uh Chief Jordan is willing to do that, so it means spending. Grant money or our own money. So let's wait to see if we get the grant money so that we don't have to spend our own dollars and make it that fund can be used for other things in the next year, so.
All right. Move her to second to accept the report. Uh councillor Manson and councillor Morton. And now therefore be it resolved, the council for the corporation of the municipality of Calvin accepts the C A O report entitled. C A O thirty-five dash twenty twenty-five and authorizing the submission of an application for funding to. Community emergency preparedness grant twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six in the amount of forty-five thousand four hundred dollars. Any discussion or questions? None? All those in favor? Would that a no councillor Latimer? That is carried unanimously. Public Works Superintendent Report. I'll turn it over to our Public Works Superintendent.
I'm always the bearer of bad news.
Yes, I read the report.
Um, the winter sand is casting its shadow across the municipality. It's here, delivered and ready for use. Um, we uh municipal engineer, Mr. Boucher from East Ferris and I. Uh we visited the Hackenbrook Bridge uh for reconsideration of design. We believe uh. Grant on size. I also would agree with him that water was coming in behind that and that wall. And pushing the uh bricks down into the creek, not actually the water forcing up against, but coming in behind. Uh so we did have uh Mr. Levante down in the riverbed with us. And we've come to an agreement as to how to uh engineer this project. Um, tomorrow JP two G uh is scheduled to be on our roads. Um I don't know if you noticed out and about that we've marked our Frosties uh with the help of our. Uh most knowledgeable employee. Um so all the Frosties are marked so that they can include that in the road needs study so we can look at if it's drainage issues or. What may be going on there. Um, we did a project where we uh ditched Adams Road from. The top of Adams Hill to the landfill. Uh that was always on our radar even pre-storm for that ditching project. Um, this also helps with dry drying out the gravel in the spring. Um, all the installations for culverts have been completed from the June storm, using our contractors as well as our own staff. Um, we're starting to prepare winter uh equipment for winter. Uh the M D R application is. Taken like a long time to put together. I think you'd be quite impressed by the amount of material that is required. It's off, it feels honestly like you're going to court. With having to, how much you have to prove on the expenditures from the storm. Um, mind you, we had successful meetings and we're on the right track.
Yeah, so we had, can I just for a second, we did have municipal affairs come in today. Uh you know, we were pushing us for an early application that we were not prepared to submit early on. And today we're just about done, so they came in and just had a courtesy review of. Things and they themselves needed to call in the M D R folks who are. Um reviewing the application to get some tips about whether we thought so. And we should share what what happened with Hackenbrook Bridge. While we thought we may be able to go to the uh. Build better portion of it through O S F, and O S F didn't say yes. Um the M D R application reviewers, I need to go. Higher up to find out if we can actually do that. So we may be faced with, we may or may not be faced with. We can't go for outside funding in order to complete the build better. The other unfortunate thing that we did hear, because we have to take pictures of the culverts as they come out. Because a lot of those culverts are rusted and they were not good in good order because the municipality did not replace them before. Their time was up, that we could be looking at about fourteen thousand if they deny those application. The culverts in our application because they were in rough shape when we pulled them out, they should have been replaced, it looks like, a long time ago, so. They did give us a little bit of a warning about that, that that would be something that they would be reviewing more closely. When they, nothing today was about reviewing application, was just are we on the right track? Because the documentation right now, we're at three binders at about four inches deep. For this application for funding. And I can tell you, there were four people on this app, and four people plus the roads crew were in here. I mean, so while Anne was able to say. She still needed to bring Brandon and Roger and Albert in to, you know, tell her where they were this day doing what, so timesheets had to be redone. Uh it's been a long haul. It's uh, yeah.
We're seeing a light.
Yeah, we we must.
We had an alternative, so we have to be uh in.
We must submit application before Monday, so Friday is going to be the magic date and. We're well on our way. Daniel's coming in, working extra hours in order to help pull that together and that's not eligible for reimbursement. Any time that we spend on the application. And I can say that it's probably been a total of two weeks uh full time.
Every minute of the day.
Yeah, every minute of the day, working on this application for funding. Um, yeah.
However, being in public works and all the training you take about how to be ready to, if you ever have to go to court. We do have documentation in place. It wasn't like we didn't have the material, it was just gathering it all and getting it there. Now it's the fine details that we're working on. Um, we've completed all of the north money that they'll ever give us. Hopefully they give us some more someday, but uh. It had to be spent at the end of this year and it's it's uh has been spent. Um. Adam. Surveying company, that's Barset. Uh they've been out on stewards and we're awaiting results. Um currently, uh Circular Materials Ontario has presented a draft change order to the agreement that we have for the recycling. Unfortunately, I cannot publicly say what they are offering us for funds as it's a complete negotiation. Between municipalities, how that works out, I think is an individual municipal uh fight. However, the cost that they have offered us does not pay for a staff depot, so we're kind of on that battle as well right now. Um hopefully we hear something. We did receive a survey today, actually, that had to be done by afterward twenty. Who expressed our intent and how, actually, basically asking if we're willing to work outside of council to negotiate the agreement. And I'll report to council that we are not.
We're not doing that. Um they wanted us to negotiate and sign off without council approval and we said absolutely not.
So that is where we're at with that. Uh however, I was expecting something should come forward quickly because they want to negotiate about the thirtieth of November. Uh recreation, hopefully we've cut the grass for the last time. Uh renovations for the washrooms at the rec center went well and on budget, under budget. Just need to finish painting the outside of the doors and assume time to start preparing the skating rink again. Uh my bad news part is equipment. Uh the transmission in the backhoe fails. The transmissions hooked to the brakes, they're all hydraulic, so everything works through the transmission. We have fixed the brakes, still have failure with the brakes. Then we started having failure with the transmissions. Try to get a remand of transmission. Remand transmissions only come through U S border, therefore they're tariffed. But it was cheaper to buy a brand new transmission within Canada. Um, however, it was a very quick change, so they're able to address other items that are going. I believe, I figured it was the transmission job alone was supposed to come in at thirty-one thousand, however, the complete. Jaw came in at thirty-one thousand. Um, then, I don't know, but three days later, the international wouldn't start. So we tried to do some simple things by, you know, changing fuel filters, putting in a sensor. Uh still wouldn't start, so I had to get towed to international, then international sent that's a quote for twenty-three thousand dollars. To continue their investigation by changing out all the injectors. Um, having a quick conversation with my compadre as I was screaming in the office. Uh, Jordan was able to calm me down and do some negotiating with Lewis. Um, so we came out with Lewis doing a bench test on the injectors. Had a quoted price of seventy-six hundred dollars. They ended up changing two injectors, so we have the international back on the road. For ten thousand dollars. And so I guess it's one of these, yay. Always true, we can't afford to buy anything new and we can't afford not to keep what we have, so. That's how I looked at it.
The unfortunate thing when we look at it is that these kinds of expenses are not, we can't go to O S F, we can't go to C C B F. Because they're operating dollars and when we look at the reserve that we have for roads. Don't have a big reserve in roads. Um so those are the kinds of things that we need to think about budgeting for, especially with A T equipment. And we do know that we have some buildings, you know, we keep talking about the roof farm. Sandal.
Yes, just on this subject. Once the M D R application is approved to an extent, we're going to put some of those funds back into the roads reserve, correct? That was the intention?
No, it was the loan, if we got this uh a different bank to approve the loan that was going back into.
Roads reserves.
Right.
But we could still. One way or another, put more money into reserves, whether it's the loan, whether it's the.
We've budgeted for reserve in rooms this year, no.
No. So this year it's not gonna help, next year.
These are expenses this year.
Yeah.
Without, you know.
Unfortunately, there are unforeseen things that happen. I can't budget for when a transmission.
Of course.
Failed or except a couple of injectors.
I'm sure everybody in this room has a problem that they've had to have unforeseen.
My battery died. My wife said it was my fault because it even changed it.
But um. Uh that's how it is. Uh uh one thing that's also coming up on October twenty ninth. Um as councils aware and on the board of directors for the Association of Road Supers for the Nipissing District. Uh we're having a joint meeting with the El Maguen District. Uh we're hosting it in calendar. And it looks like we'll have a great, successful meeting with uh all of my peers in public works.
Super here.
Super.
Getting all that done too while we're doing this.
Thank you.
But that's all I have to report today. Hopefully next time it's more.
Thank you very much for the report, Anne, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Um I need to, just to accept the report, I need to move her to secondary. Oh, okay, I'll get to your question. Uh seconded is you?
No.
Nope, seconded is councillor Manson. All right, uh whereas the public work superintendent is providing a report to council. Now therefore be it resolved that council for the corporation of Calvin accepts the report. Are there any questions or uh comments?
At the last meeting, you brought up a uh a road use agreement. And that was the first reading and we're gonna bring it back to this meeting for the second.
Oh man.
I I just wondered if uh.
We'll drop the ball, we will admit it.
The guy put that in there, might be interesting.
Oh, yes. Well, this is for the road allowance purchase.
Right.
So it takes about, probably you won't see it for five months.
Oh.
Or six months. Yeah, so in principle, council agreed to it. So now it has to go through the process of like lawyers getting involved and doing title searches and. Uh notices have to be put out, a survey has to be conducted.
Couple more months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just asking the status, because.
Yes, so it'll, you probably won't see it for.
Thank you.
Five, six months, but maybe quicker, but not too soon.
Legal has told, has told me that we should expect it by the end of October.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm lying. Generally, it'll take probably five or six months, but they are quicker than most.
Any other questions or comments? None? All right, so uh I'll call it to vote to accept the report, all those in favor? And as well, so that is carried. Agencies, boards and committees. Uh first one up. And I know that nothing's going on there at all, Bill, but if you'd like to just report on the what you can from the North Bay Madawah Conservation Authority.
Well, we haven't read in the paper.
Yeah, actually, the only thing to say. It's okay, there's been like six closed meetings, so I can't report anything for them, but somebody that is at the meetings, actually. Been in the paper almost every day, so. You have to read the newspaper. They're trying to divide. One of the newspapers, we keep calling individual board members, trying to get a comment. So right now, we're all just closing them off.
Because they were closed meetings and you're not.
Well, they're closed meeting, really wants to say it, or we're dealing with somebody, if like, if we're dealing with Anne. We don't talk about what's going on with them. We don't talk about what's going on.
Now she knows.
You know, if you can, if we serve to talk to people, then they can sue us and we already know about that.
All right, thank you very much. East Nippising Planning Board, uh councillor Grant, do you want to? Next meeting is October twenty seventh, that's right, what I have. That's correct. Anything?
Uh, I feel like you're prompting me to say something.
No, I'm not.
Okay, my memory is blank. I, we, we, we talked about the last meeting at our, our last council meeting. We haven't had a meeting since then.
Yes, okay, that's what I thought.
So if there's anything you wanted to add.
There's nothing I need to add, I don't think.
Neither, neither do I. We have our next meeting coming up. Uh physicians recruitment, uh we don't have a meeting yet, scheduled, that's only every six months, so nothing to report there. Madam Our Regional Police Services Board, councillor Grant, uh just simply that there's been no meeting October twenty ninth, it's the next meeting. Okay. Uh Canadian Ecology Centre, we did have an emergency meeting this morning. And uh. Um, it it is a dire situation and I'm sure many people in the township have. Got tired of hearing about the June twenty-first storm and its effects. But uh the effect on the Ecology Centre has been extreme. Um, the park is still closed and gated. And uh what we talked about today was uh it's been six months. Well, not quite, it's been what, uh four months since the 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 event? And they have no income, but they still have all the expenses. Of, you know, insurance, heating, electrical, whatever. So it it makes it very difficult to function. Um, there was talk about a a soft opening in. December and a hopeful opening in the beginning of next year, but of course. The one thing that we discussed is it's very difficult that even if you do open the Ecology Centre. All the trails are very dangerous. You couldn't go and walk on trails. The uh. Um, uh, the park itself. Might take another year open, so uh anybody who can think of anything to support. The Ecology Centre, they do great work. It's an educational facility. They uh teach. Of students about the environment and about ecology, so. We uh should offer them as much support as we can and this, this meeting today was to try to. Come to some conclusions about how this thing is gonna move forward, but it is a difficult situation as a result of the storm, as you can all imagine. Uh. Mayor Brown and I uh did another tour around the park. They've done an enormous amount of work uh in a cleanup and uh. Uh originally, when we did a tour of the the park, it was just. Uh massive trees all tangled together. Well, they've cleaned up tons of the trees, but. Now it just looks like a, an open field. I mean, it's, it's unbelievable. Um and I think very few people anywhere else are aware of the devastation that took place in the park and it's very unfortunate. So uh my heart goes out to uh uh all employees and members of the C E C and. I hope anyone here will do whatever they can and support them in the conference. So that's the extent of my report for the C E C issue.
Couple of questions.
Sure.
There was, so for everyone to know, even those who might be listening, while an application for funding was open to both Bond Field and. To Calvin for the storm event and the losses that we suffered. Uh the minister did not open applications for the private sector or for the not-for-profit sector, so that means. Organizations such as Canadian Ecology Centre and um the North Bay Madawah Conservation Authority for the loss they had in their culvert. Are are don't have the same opportunity that we do to to apply to that funding. The minister has said no to opening up an application for their purposes. I had a question about insurance though, because we did hear that insurance was going to help the Canadian Ecology Centre.
Oh, but of course.
Yeah.
Uh, it's limited to. Uh, but of course, uh, it's limited to actual structural damage to buildings itself. And doesn't deal with things like lost revenue, doesn't deal with things like uh. The, the repair people coming in and tearing up hydro lines, fiber optic lines and so on, so. There will be insurance coverage for some of the buildings, uh, and many of the cabins were, were. Quite damaged by falling trees, but a lot of the other expenses aren't.
Yes, I know the answer that's probing you for the public to know. The other part of it is that work sharing, so we know Bill's. Talk to the federal government of work sharing, so that's E I, when if they can get more. They don't have a waiting period for the time that they're off and maybe they'll send him a note and ask him about that. Go work from home and do some work, what a bit of work.
They're, they are doing that as of right now.
So that means the employees will be, and they're covered at a higher rate than a typical E I rate would be, so, so staffers being taken care of to some extent.
In some extent.
There, okay. Um, and one more question, because you're a board member now.
Hmm.
What about the park itself? Because they're, they lease from the park. So is the Ontario Parks helping at all? Because it's because Ontario Parks doesn't have access in there.
Ontario Parks has given them rent free status uh, for the next couple of months. So they're not paying their.
Their lease.
Their lease uh, payments, but that's for a, a limited period of time. And then those rent rental payments will come back. Um, what the park is doing. Uh, if you think about it, if the Ecology Centre had to pay to remove the trees. That blocked the access to the Ecology Centre, that would have been in the millions of dollars. And the park is taking care of sort of.
All of the park.
Yeah, all the park, which gives people access back to the Canadian. So the park has been uh, helping out as well. It's just that the organization itself has its own expenses that, and, and they have no revenue to offset the expenses. All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, uh, Castle Home Exit Strategy. You, you saw the uh, uh, letter in the uh, package, which was uh, written by the C E O. Captain Cameron, um, that was the thirty day limit. And through my knowledge, there has been a reply to that letter at this point in time. Um, but there is. Some. Feeling in the exit strategy that uh, we might have to consider at some point in time going on our own. But uh, right now, we're, we're just waiting for an answer to this letter. Um, sent by Jason to the Ministry of Long Term Healthcare. Uh, I, I can't say any more than that. Um, there is this other diversionary. Uh, program of Castle Arms and um. I've been asked to attend another meeting.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night and that's uh, this whole issue of whether. Castle Arms should be under the umbrella of Castle Home, so I will attend that meeting and uh, report back to council as. What was decided at that meeting and council can then give direction as to what they agree to do, because at this point in time. All of, all we, all we have said is ask for arbitration with Castle Arms. And uh, uh, anything else beyond asking for uh, an arbitration. Would have to be decided upon by council, so um, I'm not going to agree to anything tomorrow other than just listen to what. People suggest and then bring it back to council. Any questions, any concerns? All right, uh, mover to secondary to accept the A B Cs. Councilor Manson, seconded by Councilor Morton, now therefore be resolved, the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin accepts the agency boards and committee reports. And are limited to provided by council members at this meeting, all those in favor? Nine as well, so that is carried. So. Uh, next item on the agenda is closed meeting. Uh, I need to move her to secondary. Councilor Morton and Councilor Manson, now therefore be resolved, the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin. Moving into closed session at seven fifty six P M. Uh, to discuss litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality. And advice is subject to solicitor quiet privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, all those in favor? I'm as well, that is carried, so we are now moving into closed. Um. And you can't close out everybody there, you just uh, yeah.